Meeting's order and the meeting. Based on today's meeting. We can announce the payers, we start with plus eleven.
Twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, twenty four. Next page. The Republican Party stands for the nation. And so, Richard C. and Justice Brown.
Fairwell.
Here.
Alden McGee.
Here.
Alden Carr.
Here.
Alden Roll.
Here.
Alden Johnson. Alden Mathoya.
Here.
Alden Luther.
Here.
It's President, Your Honor.
We have a forum. May I motion to approve City Council minutes from December seventeen, twenty twenty four, is there a motion? For all the perils, second mile of the role on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
Assistant Lieutenant, Your Honor.
Take this moment to ask for a moment of silence. Employee and also very good friend of mine, Al Solomond Asfarza, passed away tragically Thursday. He's employee of the city. President all his life. He's behind daughter and large family. Services available, service information not available just yet, so that I do get, I'll send it to the city. I don't have to run in the silence. Thank you. Public comment. As a reminder, the public commentary is not part of the dialogue. Purpose of public commentary is for the mayor and Alderman of the city to receive input from the community. Is in fact a one-way communication to the city council. The city administration and department has our available discussions after the meeting. Is there any public comments? Any public comments?
Mm-hmm.
Well. Moving on. I don't have the mayoral appointment name just yet, so as we push the next meeting agenda. The mayor's report, we are hoping to approve payroll dated December twentieth, twenty twenty four, the amount of four hundred and twelve, twelve dollars and four cents. And January third, twenty twenty five. Four sixty-four, eighty-five and ten cents. And January seventeenth, four seventy-six, three sixty and ninety-two cents. Promotion. Alden Roll, second mile of the car, the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
Question carries. The V, motion to approve accounts payable for nine hundred and forty-one, eight hundred and twenty-seven and fifteen cents. Is there a motion? For all the perils, second mile of the V on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
There is. Percy, the resolution of the city of Blue Island, County Illinois. Authorizing approving a statement of work and master service agreement. With city plus. There are motion. For all of the Mathoya, second by. Of the role on the question. Alden Fairwell.
They just have a brief explanation of exactly what this is.
The website?
Yeah.
The website.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought so, thank you.
Fourth please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
There is. Resolution for the city of Blue Island, County Illinois, authorizing approving lease agreement with Harris and all the perks. Is there a motion? For all of the car, second of all the role on the question. First please do your roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
There is. Under E, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, County Illinois, authorizing approving an agreement with the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, I L D A S, is there a motion? For all the cars, second mile of the perils, on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
Motion carries. For the next two, Alden Roll is going to do a presentation before the vote. These are both recommendations for Illinois Municipal League that we implement. One is currently collected, it is a sunset that will disappear at the end of this year, causing a significant hole in our budget if we don't. Re-up it. For next year. The other one is. Sales tax that Alden Roll will also speak on, as we are the lowest in the South suburban area right now, and it's also as a sunset. Yeah, it's April first to approve. It's a one-time use because we're non-home rule. Home with communities, like Midrally, ninety percent around us. I have the authority, they have taken this authority and they plan to do it again, actually, so these figures are going to go up again. As of right now, we are the lowest in the South suburban area. That will also help go whole with our union negotiations and contracts going up, along with all the roles and operating the structure and other things, Alden Roll.
Yep, thank you. So, you know, as we prepare for this next year's budget. And in particular, assess some of our needs and our infrastructure needs. You know, there's a sort of renewed focus on making sure that we not only continue to make. The most use of the revenues we have. But that we sort of investigate every opportunity to maximize those essentially. So. What I'd like to do is, is show some metrics here just around. Where we are at with sales tax originally. As well as some characterization of the need we are facing right now for particularly water infrastructure. To sort of make the case for why I support. This particular proposal. As there said, the first is just to maintain tax that's, that's currently in place. So that we don't lose that. The other proposal before us though is to raise our, our sales tax. Right now, we are at nine percent, and so what I have on screen are. Blue Island and a number of other regional municipalities. And. You know, it's, it's hard to compare apples, apples to apples here. I think the biggest key bit of information is just, you can see the sales tax. Metric itself, we're at the bottom of the list as the yellow row. Tighter than pale tights at, at nine percent. What I wanted to do with some of these other metrics though was sort of try to boil it down to. Essentially how we're putting that revenue to work, and again. Every municipality is different, its, its revenues come from different sources. But what I did put together that I think sort of makes somewhat of a case is this. Spend per citizen per point of sales tax, so. Trying to account for the number of citizens and the net amount of seventy-five municipality. And this is not a total budget number, this is what you could think of as discretionary spending, so. It would not be sort of obligatory spending like the self-redeing government.
Because what the city is spending.
This, yeah, so that's, that's not our all-on-budget number, it's like, yeah, if you remove the water charges, yeah, exactly. So just again, trying to, to create sort of even metric. So when I rate though by that amount of expense per citizen, per. Point of, of. Sales tax. We actually rank pretty much close to the, to the top, actually, it's kind of reverse order. But essentially, we are putting our sort of revenue to good work. And obviously, since we have not raised that tax in some time, making the case for. Going up by a percentage. And continuing to put that money to work, and again, in particular. This is, this is just part of a multi-threaded effort. As we prepare to, to confront some of these infrastructure needs. I'm happy to share this, but in particular, I did just want to show where we rank with other municipalities in the region and. You know, we're really one of the only municipalities that has not taken that option to raise sales tax. So, water infrastructure. This is transcribed Brown's work, Engineering, essentially is an estimate of what they see as our most pressing water infrastructure needs. At the very bottom, you can see that we do have an estimate for lead service line replacement. That's an enormous problem. You know, right now, that's a rough estimate, but even if you were to take that. Very significant. Portion of cost from the total. We're still faced with well over a twenty million dollar expense, and that's, that's just the sort of most pressing. Water infrastructure needs that we know about. Yeah. In particular. If we look at. Three more seconds. Spending from last year. If we look at our expense totals for twenty twenty-four for the water department. And I'm just going to rank. By our spending accounts within the water departments, you can see right away. Maintenance and repairs for outside contractors to prepare water main grates with all the freezing fine. Brought us well over budget. You know, more than twice essentially what, you know, has been the historical average there. And also just draw your attention to seventy-one twenty, that's our bond principal. Which we overpaid. For the minimum requirement set, are we settled on the bond now, as a result of rent?
We'll be sure.
Yeah, and so again, just, one, this problem with water infrastructures here now. And two. Just kind of putting our, our financial house in order to, to be ready, and that includes paying down that remaining outstanding balance. So, you know, really, I guess, just wanted to kind of walk the perimeter of this. As to why I feel, you know, that that increase in, in sales tax revenue is, is not only justified but needed. As well as retaining the, the revenue from the grocery tax. Happy to answer any questions or, you know, offline or here on the spot though.
Okay. I think that's what you mentioned. Oh yeah, I'm the one also bring attention to, you got to pull up the ordinance, I was talking to the director here. If we instill into the ordinance so that it has to be used for public infrastructure and/or whoever in that scenario of not needing public infrastructure, property tax. It's law process.
Will you pull these together or will you do something?
No, sorry.
Question, yeah, question. It, it, the way it's, whereas it says in, in one forty percent increments up to one percent, are we? Doing a little leveling or just a lot?
Hundred percent likely, but order of increments fit or confusing part of revenue.
Okay. Wait, where did it?
Yeah, the options.
Okay. Whereas if you get out of twenty-two, it's at one percent. But if you go three percent, it's at one percent.
In section two, it says that we're going to be doing one percent.
One percent, okay.
It's got a sunset, and this we pass in the wording. Any other questions, we didn't do a roll call yet, so if you can answer my questions, I'll do those question part. So under F, in ordinance, the city of Blue Island, County Illinois, I think Illinois Municipal League's recommendation for non-home rule municipal retail application tax and not same thing. Municipal service application tax, is there a motion? All the perils, second mile of the role on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Under G, which Alden Roll also mentioned, is a current grocery tax that disappears at the end of this year. As a magic door. So it's just continuing to collect what we currently collect. So it's an ordinance for the city of Blue Island, County Illinois, if Illinois Municipal League's recommendation to replace revenue lost by the state grocery tax elimination. For municipal grocery service, I'm hoping to take it or say it. Is there a motion? Fairwell, second mile of the V on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
There is. Under H. Resolution for the city of Blue Island, County Illinois, authorizing approving intergovernmental agreement between the city of Blue Island and Board of Education, espouser two eighteen. Regarding the transfer of demands real property to that house to be tore down at a certain, so they can expand their public student party. Is there a motion? Alden Luther, second mile of the role on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
There is. The next two, dealing with our streetscaping funding, ride off, just as initial basis, more paperwork, but hopefully we're on track to get this thing going. So a resolution for the city of Blue Island, County Illinois to authorize and approve a joint funding agreement for federally funded. Hopefully federally funded, the right away between the city and the state of Illinois. Acting by and through its Department of Transportation for the Western Amuse Street Escape Project, under nineteen to hundred twenty-seventh street, is there a motion? For all the V, second mile of the car on the question. Alden Fairwell.
So after meeting this rate, Blue Island will pay seventy-six thousand seven hundred dollars a side of. Three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
So our portion that will come out of the business for the tip.
Yeah.
Thank you. And this is just the part of engineering. Engineering and design. Yeah. Any other questions? Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther. It's eyes, Your Honor.
There is. J is the same thing, just hundred twenty-seventh street to Grove Street. Same agreement, same grant, and again, this is a refresher, we received a lot of grant money to do the streetscaping phase two and three, and this is part of that. Eventually, we hide out, everything moves very slow. And they do things in phases, right now, they're only authorizing us to phase the engineering at the time. So this is for hundred twenty-seven, the roll, is there a motion? Motion by Alden. McGee, second mile of the role on the question. Third please do the roll call.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Alden Mathoya.
Aye.
Alden Luther.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
I'll get to clarify phase two, answer whatever. And Alden Luther, phase two also goes around the street. K, actually, K through P are all the. They actually K through P are all the same. Just renaming the current tips we have that are more transparent. So when they show up on the tax bills, people have an idea for what they are for instead of just a number. So we could do them all at once unless there's an issue not to. Okay, so the first I'll name one. Tip two, we renamed it Little Creek Tip. Tip four, we named it Northeastern Tip. Tip five is the uptown tip. Tip six is a hundred twenty seventh incense tip, which is the Thornton's Gas Station tip, without saying Thornton's Gas Station name. Tip seven is California Gardens Rec Center tip. Tip eight is the new one, Northwestern, North Hundred Twenty Seventh, Hundred Nineteenth Street. Is there a motion to approve the name changes? Alderman Fairwell, second one, Alderman Carr, on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Lutherburg.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
All right, few ordinance was good, well, Illinois, any check of one fifty building regulations in construction of Blue Island, Illinois, I guess, regarding the. That's questions we have to be filled on. It's on, here is internal.
So this is what we changed up the. Code quite a few times. This recommendation, did it go through P C G A? Didn't need to, because it's not part of the actual zone. Part of the regular city code. And it stems from an issue we were having with, you know, certain residents that we could see or see being issue in the future. So.
Alderman Lutherburg, no, exactly what I'm talking about. We can rules for the. That they can have technical defense, but has to go through P C G A.
Right, so we're gonna allow a variation in what we require for financing with approval.
So as an overall steps, the language board not allowing any of it at all. There's an example, that's across your memorial park, there's a three foot decker. They want to replace all the sections of it and encode us all. This is at least as opposed to the process. Any other question? Their motion? Alderman Lutherburg, their second one, Alderman Fairwell on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya. Alderman Lutherburg.
Um, it's my mayor's announcements, as I mentioned before. Mayor's employee passed away. That's affected me more than probably known to me in all my life, as most people in this room probably at least met him. Or known him for a long time, especially a smile, everybody in town known him. I shared that post five hundred likes within the first hour. Very popular person in town. As soon as I get information, I will send it out to everybody. But it's a huge loss. He was our, down on the spot, go to, he's the one that painted all the curves and paints over the graffiti as soon as it goes up. He's the one that picked up the American flags after the storm, put them back up. He was worked seven days a week. When something was done, you didn't have someone do it. He did. He just did it because he carried him up and down. So it's a it's a loss and it's gonna be hard to hold the bill for us because he did a lot of stuff that. Big for granted, and we got a lot of kudos for doing. So now we've sent it. In terms of that. Everything else seems to be progressing nicely. The city's moving forward. I did get a phone call today from the governor's office. Checking in on everything going at federal level. We'll talk more about that in executive session. But. I've been in constant communication, as I mentioned to you guys before, with school districts, two eighteen. Current police departments. And it's gonna be a very fluid situation. So we'll talk about that in the executive session. City clerk.
Our hometown bureau banners, signing up, it has begun inside of the city hall. Blue Caps fundraiser, beef for beef for Blue Cap is February eighth at the wine beer company. Black History Movie Night is February seventh, February fourteenth, February twenty first, February twenty eighth at the John D Reader Rec Center from seven to nine. Black History Luncheon is February twenty fourth at noon. Newly cleanup is April twenty sixth. Let's try to top our record from last year with over three hundred volunteers with help of Alderman Fairwell and Alderman Johnson. Leading the pack. My Fest is May tenth. The city's flower sale is May third, seventeenth and twenty fourth at York and Western. Blessing of the Waters is June twenty second. We will have two farmers markets this year, one Wednesday nights at Old Wester. And daytime on Fridays, T G I F. Our citywide garage sale is August seventh, eighth and ninth. That's all I have.
Welcome back, everybody. Happy New Year. It's great to see everybody. I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the December thirty first, twenty twenty four treasures report.
Alderman Lutherburg, second one, Alderman Roll on the question. Please do the roll call.
Alderman Fairwell.
Aye.
Alderman McGee.
Aye.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
Alderman Matoya.
Aye.
Alderman Lutherburg.
Aye.
It's eyes, Your Honor.
City attorney, we got executive. City administration, do you have a group right now or just executive?
Okay, just a few things from the administration, from staff. Just updated appropriations. We are still chipping away at all the, each of the, each of the departmental items and getting all of our ducks in a row. Should we tend to have a. Finalized draft presented to the council in the cow meeting, products for the first council meeting on spring then. And then our hope is to surpass at the the end of February. Okay, so. More to come on that. In front of you, we have our audit. This is the document here. Now, I will be dinging the auditors myself for family to update their cover page. It is, this is the, this is the, the executive summary for this year. So. So we have our audit in. We've been waiting for this update dragged a little bit. What you, what you're gonna see here is primarily a pretty clean bill of health. In terms of the city's accounting, accounting operations, our our risk controls, our redundancies. But in the interest of full transparency, you have a second document here. So we did get one audit finding, for those who aren't as familiar with public audits, an audit finding is a deficient, a deficiency that has to be corrected. So we want. Less findings, not more. So our goal was zero findings, obviously. We did have zero last year. We didn't have, but we, we did have this one this year. So I want to make sure you were aware of it. The finding, it's a lot of accounting language, what it really boils down to. Is we had some assets in the water department that depreciate in value. And how those depreciations of values were being accounted for. So it wasn't actually a cash problem in the accounts, basically. It was how how the depreciation of assets are being properly valued. So they gave us some corrective actions, which will be employed. Moving forward, so we don't anticipate that to be a repetitive thing. So that's all I have on that. I've submitted the list to the county, moving, moving on. I've submitted the list to the county for the statements of economic interest. Everyone. On the dice here is going to get an email almost in the next couple of weeks. Just make sure you pay attention to that. And I know the mayor touched on briefly there earlier. I did have a lot of questions today with the confusion coming out of D C. In regards to federal funding, what I can tell you is. That any disruption in federal funding is not likely to have any real immediate impact on city operations. While we do have some. Grants and other things in the police and fire department specifically, none of our day-to-day operations are overly reliant on direct federal funding. Which is good considering all the things that are going on there. So, yeah, as well as those. Unfortunate series of events for a lot of units of government are, this, this city should not have an immediate impact from these. That are gonna be court fights over who controls what, what, what federal funding. So that's all I have. Unless there's any questions from you.
Any questions? Another update, Travis, from our work engineering, we'll be coming to our February count to overview. As Alderman Roll started to point out, the significance of water, as we all know, water infrastructure that has to be done. Within the next year or so. Including our water tanks, maintenance painting, and that's six million dollar literally, just those water tanks. So that's, he's gonna start talking about all that stuff. Because what, again, like we mentioned before, those underground is almost like a spot ground. Nice getting streets repaved. We have been fixing the sewers, the streets we've been doing. There's some major stuff to underground, we need to add on Paris. So he's gonna come and start talking. All right, so we have executive, we have motion of one executive. Alderman Matoya, second vice. Alderman McGee, on the favor, say aye.
We are looking to return regular session. All in roll, if it's about the error of favor say aye.
Aye.
The executive session we talked about imminent and current litigation. Is there more to adjourn? All in roll, say aye.